Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 16th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting to order. It is now 5:00 PM. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt.
Motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to enter Executive Session for Personnel, Tribunal Appeal, and Student Safety?
Make a motion to enter Executive Session for Personnel, Tribunal, and School Safety Plan.
Second, the motion.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, we'll be back. Do I have a motion to exit Executive Session?
Make a motion to exit.
A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel, A, 1 through 2, B, 1 through 7, C, 1 through 10?
Make a motion to approve personnel.
Thank God. Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to uphold Student Disciplinary Tribunal Number 228868? Motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, the hard part's done, guys. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our program here. I'll ask you if you're able to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll take a moment now to observe a moment of silent reflection in light of everything going on in this nation recently. Thank you, everybody. Welcome. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our program. First up is the Fun Stuff: Recognitions with Mr. Derek Hershey.
Hello, my name is Derek Hershey. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, and I gotta be honest, not many people cheer for me very often, so I appreciate that. We are excited to honor students and staff tonight through a couple of different recognitions. So we're gonna start out with the FCC LA National Leadership Team from East Forsyth High School. So if you guys wanna line up, come on up. I'm first gonna ask one of you to be put on the spot. What does FCC LA stand for? Are you ready for this? All right, here we go.
FCC LA stands for Career Community Leaders of America. And to me, it stands for leadership and just working together in hard work and entrepreneurship.
Great job, I couldn't say it better. All right. So, under the guidance of teacher, I've got Lindsey Bridges, but Miss Nizeleck, you come on up too. You're good, come on up too. They were recognized at the FCC LA National Leadership Conference, and I'm gonna call each student by name. Maria Babko, first place. Ellie Betcher, gold medal. Taylor Bray, national recognition. Emily Brooks, national recognition. Madeline Clifford, gold medal. Olivia Kowalowski, gold medal. Ally Beth Tatum, gold medal. And if I were guessing, Dr. Dugan's gonna wanna take a picture of you guys. Great job. And while they're getting their seats, if you are a member of their family, friend, or a member of the school from East Forsyth High School that came to congratulate them or support them, please stand so we can recognize you as well. And now, on to North Forsyth High School students. Where are my North students at? Come on up. The following North Forsyth High School students, under the guidance of teacher Shirley Asbell, were recognized by the FCC LA National Leadership Conference, starting with Ashlyn Barnett, gold medal. Great job. Brianna Dyer, gold medal. Anna Mason, silver medal. And Isabella Stewart, silver medal. Where's North? Do we have a... I know we've got a couple of administrators over here from North. Where are you? Oh, come on, come on, come on. Sorry. Yeah, you get to walk across the stage, too. Stay right here, we're gonna do pictures.
All right, so parents go first. And then Principal McAllister and I get second dibs over here.
And can I have all family, friends, and staff members from North that came to celebrate and honor these students? Could you please stand to be recognized? Great job. And at this time, we are going to begin our Superior Spotlight. Joining us today is from Big Creek Elementary, Principal Courtney McKinney.
The nervous part was making sure the slides worked. So I feel really good about this. So, good evening. I'm Courtney McKinney, the proud principal of Big Creek Elementary School, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight to share a glimpse into the amazing things happening at our school. At Big Creek, we're focused on growing both learners and leaders. And everything we do is guided by the learner profile and our continuous improvement goals. These aren't just documents, they're the heartbeat of our school and the foundation of our daily work. This year, our theme is "Everyone is a Coach," hence our clipboard. Whether you're in the classroom, the front office, or the cafeteria, we believe everyone plays a role in helping our students succeed. Tonight, we're excited to share some of the plays from our Big Creek Playbook, strategies and stories that show how we're coaching our students towards greatness. Our continuous improvement goals this year are focused on growth in English Language Arts, collaborative professional learning communities, and increasing student engagement. Next up, we'll dive deeper into our playbook and share how we're working to increase ELA growth across our school.
Thank you, Coach McKinney. I'm Dana Ramsey, I'm one of the instructional coaches at Big Creek. One of our biggest game plans this year is for our school-wide reading initiative. Wildcats are wild about reading. Our school, we're treating literacy like a team sport. Our goal is very clear: increase our ELA scores as measured by our Ready. So while keeping our scores in mind, we're also wanting to keep the joy of literacy in mind as well. So each month, we roll out a literacy playbook in the form of a theme, and teachers get to streamline their weekly lesson plans with an anchor text, which keeps everyone running on the same plays as we're building excitement across the classrooms. So once a week, students huddle up in their morning meetings for a short, student-centered mini lesson. These are fast, focused, interactive games where they practice their drills that build both their skills and their confidence. So by combining this purposeful instruction and joyful experiences, we're not just chasing points on a scoreboard, we're building a culture where students feel like an MVP when it comes to reading. So just turning practice into progress, one page at a time. So I'd love to welcome Ms. Jarvis, so she can share more about what we're doing.
Thank you, Coach Ramsey.
My name is Michelle Jarvis, and I'm our MTSS coach at Big Creek. So our initiative puts student voice and engagement front and center. Every other week, students get to call the play by completing a quick reading survey to share their habits, interests, and ideas. These survey results are our coaching tips, guiding which books we put in play, what skills we target, and how we celebrate every win along the way. Teachers also hold one-on-one conferences, our version of a sideline session, where students set goals and talk strategy for their reading journey. We celebrate reading wins all across the building with hallway and media center displays, challenges from our mascot Wiley, and school-wide recognition that makes every reader feel like an MVP. Our August theme was "All the Places We Can Read." So our teachers shared fun photos in unexpected places to show that reading can happen anywhere. Because at Big Creek, practice makes progress, and we are coaching every Wildcat to become a lifelong reading champion on and off the field. The season is just getting started, and we're ready to go undefeated and growing readers. So now stepping up to the plate is Coach Duncan to share more.
So as Coach McKinney said, our second continuous improvement goal focuses on strengthening collaboration through professional learning communities, or PLCs. Last year, I stumbled upon a blog from the ASCD about five myths about professional development. One of these myths was people are motivated by goals a leader sets for them. Sadly, that myth is at the heart of many professional development plans. So I sent this article to Coach McKinney, and with all ideas she gets, she goes 100% all-in. So she brainstormed the idea that we can personalize professional learning through PLCs. Teachers at Big Creek filled out a survey about their professional learning interests, and then we took these interests and matched them with county specialists who could support each group of teachers, and Elevate PLCs were born. But she didn't just stop there. She knew this idea was too big to keep at Big Creek. So she reached out to other schools, and now we're collaborating with four other elementary schools in the county. Every month, teachers from across the five schools will meet with content specialists to design and share strategies that boost student engagement and achievement. Think of it like a coaching team. In sports, no single coach has all the answers. There's a head coach, but there's also assistant coaches, position coaches, and together, they develop plays that bring out the best in every player. In our district, everyone is a coach. Each teacher brings unique expertise, experiences, and strategies. When we collaborate across schools, we multiply that knowledge and build consistency so that every student, no matter what school they attend, gets the strongest instruction possible. Just like athletes benefit from shared game plans, our students benefit when their teachers share, adapt, and refine best practices. At Big Creek, Elevate PLCs are our huddles, where we analyze the data, call the next play, and set our students up for success. I'm gonna turn it over to Katie and Kristen to share our third goal.
Good evening, team. I'm Katie Turner, I'm the Assistant Principal at Big Creek.
And I'm Kristen Johnson, the Assistant Administrator, and we're gonna be coaching you on Goal 3, which focuses on student engagement.
So we're gonna walk you through our next big play, which is "Peek on a Peer." I know observations might not sound like a buzzer beater or a touchdown pass, but today we're flipping the script. Teachers spend their days engaged with their students in high-level plays. "Peek on a Peer" gives them the opportunity to watch other colleagues in the game. As with all great teams, this builds trust and deepens relationships between teammates.
In sports, coaches don't just watch, they analyze, encourage, and strategize. Observations and education should be no different. We're not there to catch mistakes, we're there to build a championship team of educators. Every classroom is a playing field, and every teacher is a key player.
And just like scouts look for agility, teamwork, and hustle, we look for instructional moves that make a difference. Clear learning goals, student engagement, differentiation strategies, and classroom culture and routines. Teachers record these plays and kick up so that we can monitor the effectiveness of our work.
After the game, athletes study film. They reflect, adjust, and improve. Our post-observation feedback is that instant replay. It's not about judgment, it's about growth. Teachers leave behind a play-by-play breakdown, also known as the feedback sheet, so teachers can review the highlights and strategize their next moves. It is all about refining technique, celebrating strong wins, and prepping for the next big win in the classroom, because great players thrive when they know their team believes in them.
So next up, we have our student athletes stepping onto the field to share their personal game plans or their goals for the season ahead. Just like any winning team, they've already huddled up with their families during Curriculum Night to strategize and set their sights on success, because let's face it, champions don't just show up, they prepare. And when students take ownership of their plays, they stay focused, engaged, and ready to score big in their learning journey.
With the board mine stepping down, she can speak to our students.
Because we get to dance in the mornings on Friday.
Big Creek is special because it has a lot of love in it and it has a lot of good teachers. The principal is a nice lady, so that's why I like Big Creek so much, and also it's a great place to play and learn.
What makes Big Creek special to me is all the teachers at work here.
Big Creek is special because of the teachers and how kind they are.
My favorite thing about Big Creek is all the things we can do during specials or pathways.
In closing, thank you for the opportunity to share a few highlights from the Big Creek Playbook. There's something truly special about our school, and tonight, you got a glimpse of the teamwork, strategy, and heart that make it all come together. At Big Creek and across Forsyth County schools, every principal shows up with the same mission: to make sure every student and adult feels safe, connected, and thrives each day. That's our game plan, and we're all in. Even though each principal leads their own schools, we're united as Team Forsyth. We trust and love our people, and we work hard to build strong conditions for success, for students and staff alike. The leaders and students who presented tonight are the real MVPs of Big Creek. They're the reason our school is such an incredible place to learn, grow, and thrive. So thank you again for the opportunity to share about Big Creek, and let's go Team Forsyth.
Great job, guys. You know, I live right next to Big Creek, right? So I spend a fair amount of time at Big Creek, and I started to participate in the annual Christmas reading, where I come and read to the kids. So I like to think I have a big part of this, improving these reading scores. You guys have any questions, any comments? Thank you, guys. All right, we're going to take a short recess. If you have insomnia, you should stay for the rest of the meeting. If not, this is a great moment for you to head home and continue on with the rest of your evening, which is certain to be more fun than what's left here. [applause] Alright, we're gonna go ahead and continue with our program here. Next up is Item 7, Public Participation on Agenda Items. Ms. Mayo, do we have anyone signed up? Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Have the members received all the pertinent documents? Any questions, comments, concerns, feedback from staff? They're all here? No?
I'll just say thank you for, to Matt and Mike for answering all my questions. Thank you.
Tricia, you asked, you had questions?
All of our new buses were approving, are gonna be outfitted with so many wonderful safety features and I just wanted to know what those were.
Excellent. Are these the propane buses or regular? Regular ones? I wanna see a propane bus.
And I was also impressed with Mr. Wark and how he negotiated that HVAC down quite a bit.
Did he really?
Yeah, he did.
He gets all the, he gets all the fun around here. Alright, we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I make a motion.
Excellent. Okay. Motion by Mrs. Hoy, second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor?
Underwood.
Unanimous. Next up is Presentation and Discussion Items. First, Mr. Todd Shirley with the Perry Weather System.
Sidekick for this time?
I do, I do. The sidekick is gonna do the talking. I wanna start off by saying thank you to Steve Hahn and Nathan Turner who have been, who have spent a good part of the last year researching Perry Weather, calling around to a lot of districts and a lot of people that have implemented this system. And then, really, it was a deciding factor when we were standing at Forsyth Central's football game on the first game of the season and we were in lightning delays and weather delays and they were walking around with bullhorns notifying people that this is the direction that we need to go. Additional thanks go to Larry for helping us find the financing for it and Brad and Trey for helping us put together, put together all of the paperwork and everything behind the scenes. Everybody really pulled together. And the biggest thanks goes to the superintendent and our board for always putting school safety first. As you guys know, it is the number one goal, the safety of our staff and our students. And that is why we wanna continue to look for ways to get better in student support and safety. And I think you're gonna be impressed with what you hear tonight. Mr. Turner, I'll turn it over to you.
Hope y'all are doing well. I mean, you see you got your clipboards, so if you've got a ballgame Thursday night, be ready to be there with your clipboards, okay? Guys, about a year ago, I met people from Perry Weather and started looking at their system and talking to them and really found out that they were the first true onsite weather system at athletic events that could do everything to keep crowd protection safe, players safe, and really just keep us where we are not in harm's way. And so, after we started talking with them, started talking with Steve and started talking about what it does, we found out that this Perry Weather, Weather System does, does much more than that. And if you can see it, what we're looking at having is having seven weather stations at the seven high schools that gives you accuracy and real-time weather data. It allows us to be able to utilize it, also at our middle schools and elementary schools upon when needed. These stations will be based on the roofs of the schools at the seven high schools. Now, Alliance has its own weather system and weather station already, so we won't have one there, but it is also two miles from Central, so we can, we can use it there and look at it there. These weather systems are, they're solar and they're mounted onto the roofs. And facilities have done a great job looking to see where to put them. They'll be close to the stadiums and they'll be in the vicinity of all of our ballfields, so it'll be used in practices as well. There's no internet or ethernet cabling needed. They're solar powered with a solar backup with a battery that if the power does go out, they have five to seven days and that battery is supposed to last between five and seven years. So, it's a system that should last us for a long while. If you've been to any of the games this year, we've already had two of the three home games and then we had a team on the road that actually went and played in another county that just bought this and we used the system. And I got to be a part of it firsthand a couple of weeks ago when East went to Chesta T in Hall County and see it. It has a lightning system on it that can alert you from 20 miles out, 10 mile, 15 miles out, 10 miles out, and then, of course, at 10 miles is when we do clear. One of the other options that it does have too is you have real-time connection to a meteorologist. And that's about a five-minute delay from the time you ask, you're gonna get an answer back. And we tested that and played with that the other day. It's gonna work with the wind conditions. As you guys know, I get very nervous around July of each year because of the heat and the heat stress on the body. It has a wet bulb built in, a wet bulb sensor that will send push-button notification to the coaches and let you know if it's too hot to practice. On the flip side of that, in the wintertime, if it's too cold, it has push-button notification to let you know if it's too cold as well. But it has a desktop mobilization unit, also mobile app unit, the outdoor warning siren for lightning. When you do have lightning, it has a 30-minute countdown for clear and that 30-minute countdown just continuously rolls over if there's still lightning in the area until you get to clear. And so, the motion lightning will blink through the whole process to let you know that it's not clear in that time period. But what we've been through and what we've used over the last several years, we started out with a thing called Thunderbolt handheld detection device. Chris, you remember that? And then, we went to using Weatherbug, using the app, Weatherbug app. And guys, there's a delay there and that's a dangerous thing because it's not the accuracy and the speed that we need. And so, this is gonna reduce the lag time. It's gonna give us the real up-to-date knowledge that we need and it gives us a faster response time, a faster decision time, and lets us be able to make decisions quicker. If you're part of the Georgia game two weeks ago with Austin Peay, that same system, Perry Weather, is what we use there to clear 100,000 people out of a stadium. So, it's, everybody's using it. PGA uses it on all the golf tournaments now. South County Parks and Recs bought it about three months ago. So, we will be unified between the schools and the Parks and Rec. Our county is well-covered with Perry Weather now. So, we're excited about that. So, any questions you guys might have, but I think this is something that will help us all. Like Todd said, it will unify us, we'll be under one cap and under one system that will really protect our student athletes, our parents, teachers, and staff as well. And it can also be utilized for more than athletics, guys, too. Our school safety, we'll be able to use it to track storms. Transportation can use it to find out wind conditions and road, road conditions in the cold weather. So, it's multi-use weather system that we can use in a lot of areas for the school district.
I was gonna say, having a good calibrated, especially in winter weather, sometimes, a lot of times, we flirt right with that, 33 degrees, you know what I'm saying? 32, right there. And so, having good, real-time information.
You'll get the difference in temperature across the county, too. You'll have a good look at all of them, so.
So, I'll ask you a little bit of a dumb question. This, this doesn't reply or rely on any like third-party detection, it does its own detecting of the weather? How does it communicate? Is it like cellular or?
Steve, you wanna talk about that cellular, through the cell signal?
Okay. Alright. Questions? Questions? Alright, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, the undoubtedly most exciting part of the evening, Mr. Larry Hamer with the Finance Report.
Yes, sir.
Some new graphs on here tonight, I think.
Yeah. I step up my game a little bit.
So, here we go.
So, tonight, we'll be talking about the August 2025 financial statements. As always, we have Board Go Five in mind. So, we started the month off with about $146 million in cash and ended the month with about $114 million. As you know, this time of the year, we're just running on cash reserves until we start getting our first big drop of tax revenue. Because we were able to, even though we were late in getting information from the county on the Tax Digest, they were actually ahead of schedule in getting everything approved and sent to the printers. So, we're about a week or two in advance. So, last year, we really didn't start seeing good drops until right before Thanksgiving. This year, we should be sending at the end of October, beginning of November, which will be better for us. Just to kinda give you an idea where we stand, and I'll go more into this, why these numbers are off from previous years, but you can see our cash balance is down a little bit and our fund balance is down compared to last year as well. Any questions on that slide? Like I said, I'll talk more to that, the reason for those, in next couple of slides. So, if we look at the revenue side of everything, we're at about 8.43%. We're, we're close to that in terms of where we should be compared to last year. With July and August, kinda what happens is, is as we're closing the books, we have to go back and look at the receivables and sometimes we have to pull some money out of these, move them back to last year. So, if the numbers look different from month to month for July and August, when we get into September, that'll be the reason for that. As you can see, we're just slightly below where we should be in August and July for collections compared to last year. And this is the new chart, this is called a table chart. So, basically what it is, is instead of having that pie graph with all the numbers and looking very cumbersome, this chart represents 100% everything that's been collected. So, when you look at it, it kinda gives you perspective that the QB money makes up a huge majority of the money collected for this particular month. As you can see, the Avalon taxes, the next, investment income, and so on, so on. When you get down to the little bitty corner here at the right, you can't see all of it, but that's kinda where all the remaining items are collected. Now, for example, when we get into November or late October, you'll notice that QB will shrink in comparison to Avalon collections.
They only pay out the QBE one time?
QB's paid every month.
Pay out?
Yes.
Larry, if you're taking a vote, I vote for the pie chart.
Okay, that's fine. I just thought I'd try something new.
No, I appreciate it. I'm just saying I like the pie chart better.
So, as you can see, actual collections versus budget collections are actually ahead of schedule in terms of how the budget was laid out versus compared to last year. Now, the one part I do wanna talk to you about, why the fund balance is down and why cash is down, is if you will look down to the second to last line, transfer to other funds, you'll notice that we have a revised budget of, or a budget of $274,000. That's basically the money we transfer out to ROTC and G-Nets, but you'll notice we spent $10.7 million on that particular item. So, what's happened is, is we transferred about eight and a half, 8.9 million dollars for the initial reserve from last year for Midway, I mean, the Mashup, excuse me, extension. So, we made that transfer to Fund 301. And the other million plus, almost $2 million, is additional funds that was due August 1st for interest payments that is part of the reserve amounts we have as well. So, the reason, you know, we're at 19.19 and it's a lot higher than it should be this time of the year is because we've moved that $10 million out of the general fund from the reserves to these other two funds to pay for those things we had agreed to pay for. And that's basically why it looks that way. If it wasn't for that, everything else would be normal for this time of the year.
And that should work itself out over time, no?
Yeah, eventually, yes, it will. You can see the expenses are ahead of schedule because of those monies we moved out for the reserve amounts. Again, I understand you like the pie chart better, but this one.
This looks good a lot.
Okay. So, this is kind of a breakdown of the 100% box where you can see instruction versus MNO, student transportation, school admin, and so on, so on. And of course, when you get down to the small stuff like, you know, school for service expenditures, other outlay, debt service, those are the smaller boxes. I'll go with the board members on this, sir.
As you do. We do the key.
Fresh new month, y'all like to.
Yeah, box table, box chart, there's different games for it.
Is this Duke unapproved?
No, I'm going outside of Duke unapproval on this. I don't want her to take any negative credit for that, it's all mine. As you can see here, we, our actual expenditures are above our budget amount, so we are negative to the revenue above the budget here. And again, explanation is, is we spent almost $11 million for reserve amounts in the first two months. Now, if we start looking at debt service and cash analysis, you can see our debt service is down to about $505,000. Our debt's about the 641 and SPOSS is right at 5, 6. All these amounts were higher last year for this particular amounts. Our debt service LGIP, we've, we're done paying for LGIP money, excuse me, we're done for paying for debt service money out of SPOSS funds going to future. So, there's no more SPOSS funds to be spent for debt service. Everything we will be paying going forward will be a combination of the amount we collect for the MNO, I mean, for the debt portion of a mill rate and a part of that $30 million plus dollars that we had reserved out in the general fund. Special revenue funds, really, there's not much activity in there. It's just, you know, continuation of the funds from the previous year. Federal funds don't stop getting spent until September 30th. The new September funds will go through October 1st. Good news on that front. And you've probably seen the emails out there, all of the carryover funds have been approved as well as some of the new budget amounts have come through. Something? I'm sorry, I thought I heard something. Okay. Capital projects, you can see we have the $8 million that went out this month. We are finishing, in July and August, we were finishing some of the big projects that, for this cluster, we had done. Most of that money is spent out. We should start collecting some of the capital outlay in the next several months before we start the next series of projects, starting with next summer. School nutrition, we don't really collect money until September, so you can see here, we did pay out about $1.5 million for expenditures. Oh, by the way, we sent our largest wire we've ever sent, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we are starting to move our accounting program to no longer cut checks. We are now doing EFT payments. So, our goal is to get to 100% EFP payments with all our vendors going forward, AP vendors. We sent our biggest EFT payment ever to a vendor for school foods and it was over a million, 1.4 million dollars. So, just kinda giving you an idea. On investment summary, you can see we're down to $54 million. Between that number and cash, we are typically in the, close to the 80, 90 million dollar range, but we're gonna be spinning down about $27 million for the next couple of months. And you can see that's gonna get us close to about $60 million. Fund services down about 641, school nutrition still has 16 million, and then 352 is down to 5, SPOSS 6. We're spinning SPOSS 6 so close to the edge that when we do finish SPOSS 6, we won't have much money left in there at all by the time that program's all said and done. These are the collections. I will point out that the last collections for August, for the July collection, July SPOSS, excuse me, July penny sales tax was 5.4, previous month was 5.3, and we're about 2.58 ahead of that. It's still, it's still in that two to seven range difference and it's a lot ahead in terms of what we had budgeted, actually. We're budget-wise, we're up still about 14% overall budgeted versus what we collected. We are still only three months in advance collections right now. That trend is holding, I think it should hold until we get done. That means we should be done collecting in December of '26 is what it looks like. Cash receipts and disbursements for elementaries, normal for this time of the year, $4.8 million in the balance. Middle schools and high schools, well, normal for this year and we have 2.4 and 7 million total of about $14 million and the balances is about the same as it was last year. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hamer. I like the box chart personally, I don't know. It's my opinion. Next up, we have a series of action items on the agenda, so I'll begin with Action Item 10A, the Perry Weather System.
It was Brad.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to make the first action presentation of the evening. A few minutes ago, you heard Todd and Nathan give you the, the presentation on the Perry Weather System. I'm not going to, Todd and Nathan just cleared a job, I'm not gonna rehash that, but I'll labor you on that, but I would like to just address the contracting portion of it. We did work with their team, come alongside their team and negotiate the contract through a TIPS cooperative contract, which is board, which is compliant with board policy and purchasing procedure as well. We negotiated some terms that made it more favorable for us. So, with that being said, it would be my recommendation to ask the board to approve the purchase of the Perry Weather System specified in this action item for the amount of $101,500, $500 to Perry Weather.
And I recommend for approval, the Perry Weather System.
I make a motion that we approve Perry Weather System. Ask person.
A, I'm supposed to ask for the motion, Chris? We have a, we have a protocol here, aren't we?
He was excited.
He really likes the weather system. Alright. A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Ms. Usherwood. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have a few policy reviews, or approvals, better said, policy revision approvals. First up is Mr. Derek Hershey. Policy GAA, equal opportunity employment.
We presented this at the last board meeting in August, I believe, with changes and posted it to be reviewed for over 30 days. And so, at this point in time, wanted to see if the board had any questions.
Questions? Nope.
No feedback?
No feedback. I would like to make the recommendation to Dr. Young to approve recommended changes.
Yeah, I recommended the board approval of the changes presented at the last board meeting and before us today.
Alright. Is there a motion to adopt the changes to policy GAA?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Hoy, second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion questions? Nope. All in favor? Unanimous? Next policy revision is policy GARH, employee leaves and absences.
Again, we made very minor changes to this policy. Do you guys have any questions?
Any feedback?
Not to my knowledge, Suzy. Nope. Okay, so again, I'd make the recommendations to Dr. Young to adopt all changes.
And I recommend for approval, the changes to board policy GARH as proposed.
Is there a motion to approve the changes to policy GARH?
I make a motion to approve.
Excellent.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hoy, a second by Mr. Usherwood. Any discussion questions? All in favor? Unanimous, it's adopted. Thank you, Mr. Hershey.
My pleasure.
Next up, policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use with Mr. Mike Evans, emerging from the Batcave.
Similar to the other policies, this one is an update to our Internet Acceptable Use policy and this is based on Senate Bill 351 that adds some administrative procedures as well as some requirements for digital citizenship that require incorporating social media lessons into our instruction. I believe there was no public feedback or no information or consent for that. So, at this point, if there's any questions? If not, I'll ask the superintendent to recommend approval.
I recommend for approval, board policy IFBG as changed.
Is there a motion to adopt the changes to policy IFBG?
Second.
Excellent. A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Evans. Alright, next on the agenda, Item 11 is Points of Information. Have the members received the documents? Anything to add, anything to discuss? Nope. Alright, then that brings us to Item 12, which is the Public Participation on Non-Agenda Items. We have one speaker registered tonight, Mr. Jared Chrishell. You are a regular here, sir, so I will not give you the instructions.
I'm gonna ask for 30 more seconds if you don't mind.
It's becoming a habit.
Dear Heavenly Father, please bless the family and friends of Charlie Kirk with love and comfort they need in this hour of darkness and please bless all of us with the wisdom and strength to carry on his noble work with the spirit of peace and compassion he preached. Let us transform our righteous anger and crippling sorrow into becoming better versions of ourselves for the sake of our families, our friends, our country, and the world. I say these things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen. I've spent the past four years at these meetings fighting with my words against woke leftist ideology. I may not have always been as kind or as diplomatic as I should have been. I may not have been as convincing or as persuasive as I thought I was, but even as I spoke strongly against the deeply held beliefs of others, I always invited them to continue the conversation with peace and respect. I'm ashamed to say that only one woke leftist ever took me up on my offer for a free lunch. Others would shy away as if I had a disease they could catch simply by engaging in conversation. Some would purposefully interrupt discussions I was having with their friends, apparently worried that if the conversation continued, someone might change their mind. One went so far as to ask our officers here to make sure I didn't get close enough to speak to her. Now, since the triumphant reelection of Donald Trump, we haven't seen many of those familiar faces at these meetings and I'm sad for the missed opportunities to see each other in person and find common humanity together. But I'm also frankly relieved and it pains me to feel this way. I'm relieved that they're not here to spew hateful rhetoric, to dehumanize those they disagree with. I'm relieved not to be called a fascist or racist or sexist or a homophobe or a transphobe or some threat to democracy. It pains me, though, because now I know that their casual use of these slurs is part of what drove a young man confused by gender ideology to pick up a gun and end an argument with a bullet instead of words. I would ask you to scan the social media feeds of every single school district employee and immediately terminate those celebrating Charlie Kirk's death. I would ask you to make clear to every employee that casually calls their political opponents fascists or racists or misogynists or transphobes or homophobes or a threat to democracy that they'll be treated just as harshly as any principal caught on secret recording using the